Okay. Thank you for all your patience. We appreciate that. We'll call it a order tonight's Committee of the Whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for November the 7th, 2023. The city council should have the minutes from the Committee of the Whole meeting from October the 17th, or the additions or corrections of those minutes.
None. Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion as second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes carry forth. Education, building, educational building authority. Mayor Protem Whitten.
Yes, sir. Let me grab my packet. So I know what this term is. Yes, sir. We have one position. Term begins November 10, 2023, and ends November 9, 2029. Incumbent Martee Mosley has served one stagger term, one full term. I would like to nominate Paige Moore.
Second.
Have a motion as second for Paige Moore. Any discussion? You're the nominee. All right. All in favor of Paige Moore, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We'll confirm that later on in the agenda. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Mayor Protem Whitten again.
Yes, sir. We have two positions. Terms begin December 1, 2023, and end November 30, 2027. Incumbents, Robert Cochran has served one partial and two full terms, and Malcolm Daley has served two full terms. For the position to vacate and fill Robert Cochran's seat, I'd like to nominate Jamelle Brooks.
Second.
All right. Have a motion as second for Jamelle Brooks. Any comments? Conversation? All in favor of Mr. Brooks, please say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me?
Are there any other nominations for that particular seat?
Okay. Any other nominations for this particular seat to replace Mr. Cochran?
No.
All right. Seeing none. All in favor of Mr. Brooks, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. We'll confirm that later on in the agenda.
All right. For the second vacancy, I would like to nominate Bradley Northcutt.
Second.
All right. We have a motion as second for Bradley Northcutt. Are there any other nominations for this seat?
Yes, I would like to nominate Walter Nor- Northcutt.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Have a motion as second for Walter Northcutt. Are there any other nominations for this seat? Okay. Any discussions related to Bradley Northcutt? I'll take this one. I was encouraged Bradley to apply for this position. Bradley grew up here in Auburn. He grew up with my two sons, was very active in athletics. His dad coached him in all the sports in our programs here. He is part of his family's business today, and I think he'd make an excellent young leader in our community as we move forward with a new director of Parks and Rec and certainly a growing community. I believe Bradley's got the energy and enthusiasm and the desire and the experience to do a great job in Parks and Rec. Any other comments? For Bradley?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just say about both of these candidates for this position, I'm sure they're more than capable of this role. I won't be supporting either of them just due to the fact of the, that they are family to one of our council members, and I'm just not comfortable being in support of that situation. But I wish them both very well.
Ms. Krauts, would that be officially an abstention or just a no vote? How would we record that?
I think it depends on how you're handling this. Typically, when you have two candidates, you vote for one or the other. And so that'll be up to Councilman Parsons if he's abstaining or not voting, which is the same as abstaining, or whatever he chooses to do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Any other comments related to Bradley Northcutt? Okay. Mr. Walter Northcutt, any comments related to?
Yes, I voted for Walter because I've known Walter for a long time. And actually, his kids and my kids come along at, along during the same time doing Parks and Recreation. And when I read his resume, I see he has a lot to offer to Parks and Recreation. And I've also talked with him, and also he's very interested, and I think he would be a great asset to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anyone else?
I will be, I'm the council person that's related to both these individuals, so I'll be abstaining from this vote.
So I'll remind the council, an abstention, you're already missing a council member, and so you have quorum. However, those, those voting at this time, as far as I know, are seven of you. So we'll take four affirmative for anyone to be nominated.
Okay. All right. So we'll take Mr. Bradley Northcutt first?
And, and your procedure has been to vote for one at a time because I know Councilman Dawson is unable to be with us this evening, but you've been sensitive as council, as Mr. Parsons indicated, about appearing to vote against anybody. It's just you need to vote for one or the other.
Sure. Okay.
Or abstain.
So we'll start off by voting for Mr. Northcutt. So.
Which one?
Bradley Northcutt. Thank you, Sonny. Thank you. Very confused. This is an uncle and a nephew. So only in Auburn will you get these kind of board appointments. I appreciate both of them. They're both good people. They'll both do a great job. I'm very thankful that they want to spend their free time serving our community in this format. All right. All those in favor of Mr. Bradley Northcutt, please raise your hand. Is that four? Okay.
So that does it?
That'll carry? Okay.
That carries.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We had a great slate of citizens who applied to, to serve on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. There's a lot of attention being put towards our Parks and Rec as our building programs are continuing on, and I'm just thankful that people want to be a part of this. It's an exciting time to be a part of Parks and Rec. So thank you, everybody that applied to be a part of this. I appreciate everyone. They were outstanding. All right. Any questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager? Any questions? City manager, anything for us?
I just to remind you, since Councilman Adams, and he was probably going to handle this anyway, abstained on the vote, that you should pull this particular item off the consent agenda so that that gives him the ability to let the record reflect that he's abstained on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board vote because they're both in the same resolution.
Okay. All right.
If that's your, your pleasure, Tyler, but.
All right. Anything for the city manager? All right. So move to adjourn the Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
All right. We are adjourned. It is past 6 o'clock, and we'll go ahead and continue on with a welcome, everybody, to our Auburn City Council meeting for November the 7th, 2023. I appreciate all of you who have come and joined us in person. We certainly welcome the people who are on WANI and listening to us tonight and those that are streaming. Really? We're streaming now?
We are streaming.
That might be streaming. Okay.
Yes, we are streaming. We posted some links to our social media to get folks, and we do have WANI corrected, but we may not be able to stream live from Facebook at the moment, but there's a link that sends you where you need to go.
And again, thank you, everybody, for their patience and understanding as we got started a little bit late tonight. All right. With the roll call, Allison.
Adams.
Here.
Coblins.
Here.
Dawson. Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Whitten.
Here.
Anders.
Here. Before we stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence, I just would ask everybody during the moment of silence, please be reflective and thankful and thinking of our neighbors in Smith Station. Okay? So please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. This is the first meeting in the month of November, so we will recognize our outstanding employees.
We're proud today to introduce you to our November Employee of the Month, and I have a memorandum here written by Eric Carson, our Water Resource Management Director, and Keith Williams, our Public Service Executive Director. It is my honor to nominate Ronald Ron McCurry as the Employee of the Month for November 2023. Ron joined the Watershed Division of Water Resource Management in January 2006 as a stormwater coordinator. Ron's normal duties include implementing the city's erosion and sediment control inspection enforcement program, performing stormwater post-construction inspections, assisting coworkers in water quality monitoring, and performing stormwater outfall inspections. In addition, Ron assists other city departments by inspecting private and public detention ponds. Ron exhibits a strong work ethic with a positive attitude. He accepts challenges and consistently meets or exceeds the expectations of his supervisor and peers. Recently, Ron took the initiative to become a certified professional in erosion and sediment control, and he is currently working towards receiving his drones license. Both certifications will continue to positively, positively expand the effectiveness and efficiency of the city's construction site erosion and sediment control inspections. Ron has proven to be a reliable and dedicated employee who makes a point to offer his assistance when it is needed. Outside of normal working hours, Ron has consistently helped the Watershed Division Manager promote the city's MS4 program during annual city events. In addition to his employment with the city, he is an active member of the Alabama National Guard. Thank you for that. Ron promotes team unity by treating coworkers with respect and working together to resolve issues. He works with his coworkers and other city departments to complete tasks, and he takes pride in his work. Ron does not hesitate to investigate a complaint received from a citizen, and he provides friendly and professional customer service to the citizens of Auburn with distinction. For these reasons and many others, I would like to recognize Ronald Ron McCurry, Jr., as the November Employee of the Month. Congratulations, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. During the Committee of the Whole tonight, the city council appointed Paige Moore to serve on the Educational Building Authority, and I want to thank Martee Mosley for her service. City council appointed Jamelle Brooks to serve on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board as well as Bradley Northcutt, and I want to thank Robert Cochran and Malcolm Daley for their wonderful service. Under Mayor's announcements tonight, I want to remind our community that tomorrow at 5:30 is the State of the City. This will be at the Gooch Performing Arts Center. We'll take a look back at the last year in the city of Auburn and look ahead at what might happen in this coming year. At the end of that time, I will recognize six citizens that have been really special folks and have made Auburn the kind of town that we're all proud to live in with the Mayor's Lamp Light Awards. This is a free event. You do not have to have a reservation. Come as you are after work, and please come listen to what's going on in your community. This Friday is Veterans Day, and weather permitting, we'll be out at the Veterans Monument at 10 o'clock, and look forward for a special time as we stop and pause and think the men and women who served to protect us and give us our freedoms each and every day. I want to tell the two men that are sitting up here with us tonight, thank you to Sonny and Kelly for your service as veterans, and we look forward to our community rallying around and being a part of that. This past week, Behind the Glass had a celebration of an anniversary, but more importantly, for what my comments tonight is, they were celebrating their mural. And Ms. Donna Young had a mural built on the side of her building that's a gigantic Magnolia to recognize Magnolia Avenue. When this city council allowed murals, I think we all had a little bit of hesitation in our heart about what we could get from that. And I am very proud and thankful that Donna Young stepped, stepped out there with a very classy and dignified and appropriate mural that I believe everybody in our community, our alums, and the people who come in Auburn will be very proud of, and I encourage all of you to take some time to go by and look at it. It's awesome. This, this morning, I stopped by the Auburn University Hotel and Conference Center, and there were 200 people for the Southeastern Cement Association Conference. This is another example of what goes on in our community while we're all at work, while we're all seeing about our children, seeing about our lives. There are visitors that come to our town for more than just ballgames, that are spending money and spending time here. I'm thankful for our tourism office, the way they recruit these conferences to our town, but there was over 200 really happy people to spend a couple nights in Auburn, and we're very proud to have them. And in the back room tonight are members of the Auburn High School Student Council, and I have been spending time with them over at Auburn High and getting to know all of them, and I appreciate their bold leadership at Auburn High School and glad to have them here tonight. Welcome, and thank you for what you do at Auburn High School for leading that student body. Anybody else have anything they'd like to offer tonight?
Yes, I would.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to, just for the record, I just wanted to make sure if, if we can have a clarity on sidewalks, the width of the sidewalks on Martin Luther King, to make sure that they are consistent with these, with the sidewalks throughout the city.
I'll have City Engineer Frasier explain. We talked a little bit about this, that the sidewalk that is going in as part of the Martin Luther King Drive Streetscape project is what we call a multi-use path, and multi-use paths appear throughout the city, especially in major gateways. You see them on Morris Mill Road. You're seeing it on Richland Road. One was built on Will Beekner Parkway, and Allison will remind me what other areas that I'm forgetting, but I believe that the sidewalk is, the multi-use path is 10 feet wide on Martin Luther King Drive as part of that Streetscape project.
That's correct.
And so the intention there is an average sidewalk throughout older parts of the city is four feet wide. It's nearly impossible to pass somebody on the sidewalk without stepping off. A new standard requires five feet, and that's a federal standard that we've been following recently. The purpose of a 10-foot multi-use path is that you can have a stroller going in one direction, a bicycle not at high speed in another direction, and they can safely pass each other without anyone stepping off the sidewalk. And the goal is to provide a wider space for people to feel comfortable away from cars and to be on the sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you for that information, Megan. I just wanted to clarify that because I have several people calling me asking me about the width of the sidewalk. So I just want to make sure everybody know that, you know, it's consistent with all, any other type of.
We will be building on North Donahue as it gets wide, and also a multi-use path of similar width, so.
Okay. And I have one other announcement. On Wednesday, November 22nd, at the Borkin Community Center, there would be, I would be hosting a Thanksgiving dinner for our senior citizens, our disabled and our homeless from 2 to 5. So we are asking any senior citizen, it's open to the public, so any senior citizen that would like to come out and enjoy a hot meal before Thanksgiving, you're welcome and you're invited.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anyone else on the council have an announcement they'd like to make tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do.
Please.
Had a busy week last week. In my other role as a firefighter for the city of Opalika, one of my tasks is to teach a fire investigator class, and three Auburn guys came and attended the class for fire investigator. And I just got the results back that all three of those fine young fellows passed their exams, and it was a pleasure working with them. They, they did a final presentation that was quite, quite fantastic, was very well-prepared, very professionally delivered, and those, those young guys are credit to the, to the department. So my appreciation to you and to Chief Langford. The other, the other wonderful opportunity that I had with, was with Mayor Protem Beth Whitten, myself. We delivered a proclamation last week to Auburn High School junior Harley Walker proclaiming November 3rd as being Harley Walker Day. Harley Walker has the distinct, unique position of being the youngest citizen in the United States' history to testify before the United States Judiciary Committee. She testified on LGBTQ rights and civil liberties, and it was a great afternoon with family and friends celebrating quite a, quite a remarkable advocate right here in our city. So it was wonderful, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Good. Anyone else on the council? Okay. We'll move ahead with our university communications.
Good afternoon, y'all. I first wanted to shed light on my mentee as a part of the freshman forum program. He's here with me this afternoon. He came in, came and figured he'd get an idea of what's going on here at the city council.
Does he have a name?
He does. It's Robert Suter. I forgot.
Okay, good. Hey, Robert.
It's from Enterprise. He's a really cool guy. But we've had the freshman forum mentorship program that we've been doing a lot recently, just getting some of the freshmen involved on campus, and figured this would be a cool opportunity. This week, the SGA is hosting a safety walk. This is going on actually tonight. They're ensuring the function and standards of the blue lights around campus. They're all going around pressing those. Next Tuesday, the SGA is co-hosting the Breaking Barriers event with the International Student Organization, the Black Student Union, and Spectrum. This event features a small group discussion and is going to focus on recruitment and retention at the university. It'll be covering student opinions and future plans for scholarships, amenities, and involvement. I'll report back with the highlights from this event at the next meeting. Up all night at RBD Library will be held during the finals this December 3rd through 7th this year. SGA is going to be handing out donuts and snacks and treats for all the students that are studying. Progress has been continuing towards ironing out some of the issues with the campus dining through our Auburn Answers program. Ring Night will be November 30th on Sanford Lawn. The annual international peace dinner was held last week at the Student Activity Center. The International Student Organization hosted all sorts of different, different organizations on campus. Cuisine from over 15 countries were available for the over 1,000 students who were in attendance. Construction has begun on an obby statue on the concourse in front of the Student Center by Keller Hall, was completely donor-funded. Better Relations Day with the University of Alabama Student Government Association will be this Thursday at 9:00 a.m. We're looking forward to welcoming, welcoming them into town. And finally, we look forward to your State of the City speech tomorrow. That's all for me. War Eagle.
Thank you, War Eagle. Appreciate you being here. At this time, citizens, communications on items on tonight's agenda, I will say that there's one particular item that comes up twice, once under ordinances and once under resolutions to do with the district. If you'd like to speak to the city council about the district, please wait until those public hearings are open a little bit later in the agenda. But if you'd like to speak to the city council about anything else on tonight's agenda, now would be the time for you to come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move ahead with city manager's communications.
All right, Mayor. Under city manager's communications, once again, I shall announce three vacancies on the tree commission. We're going to try a third time's a charm. Terms will begin upon appointment and end November 7th, 2026. You'll make those appointments at the December 5th meeting. Our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes. I'll pull 8G2. Anyone else?
Eight. Eight E2?
Eight E2.
And I would like to pull 8E4, please.
Eight E4.
All right. Anyone else?
Eight Charlie and Delta. Just a few left.
And 8D.
All right. Item 8C waives residential trash collection fees for trash and debris piles that exceed five cubic yards for March 4th through March 29th of 2024.
Move for approval.
Got a motion as second. Mr. Mormon, I'll turn it over to you.
One of the blessings of living in Auburn is that you can take something down to the curb, and the next morning, it's magically gone. And, and I want to talk about what was normal because we're fixing a vote on something that is a good deal for the citizens, but normally, as you mentioned, Megan, it's five cubic yards, and I did the math on that because I didn't know what five cubic yards looked like, but it's, as I calculate, about four by four by eight feet.
Our environment services director shall confirm. Yes.
So if you see a pile in, in front of my house, it's about four feet by four feet by eight feet long, it's okay. And that's every day. And the reason I, the main reason I wanted to discuss this is to thank our city staff for doing a good job all year long, not, not just in special times, but I, I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you.
We appreciate that, and this is a time of year where we try and work hard to schedule that at a time that people are doing their spring cleanup of their yards so that they can get a little extra debris out without calling us and paying extra, help them get that cleanup taken care of. And we do stretch it. Spring break is mixed in there, but we stretch it most of the month of March. That should give you time.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mrs. Cook, for you and your staff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Item 8D authorizes a temporary street closure for East Magnolia Avenue between College Street and Gay Street on December 1st, 2023, from 5:15 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for the Downtown Merchants Association Holiday Fair.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Mr. Mormon?
I have been, been made aware that it costs money, time, and effort to close a city street in downtown Auburn. In fact, several thousand dollars. There is overtime pay for security and safety to move barricades, barricades before and after the event, plus their presence at the event, plus sanitation workers to clean up from the event. And I, I look forward to these. These are several of these coming up, and this is really why I wanted to, to talk about this. The first of these events is called Downtown Holiday Fair, and that's coming up Friday evening, I believe, from about 5:30 to 8 on the 1st of December. And then the very next day, on Saturday, there is a holiday market, and then the very next day, on Sunday, there is a parade. So I'm, I'm grateful for the efforts of our city employees to work long hours to get this all taken care of, and so thank them when you see them for a job well done again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We have a motion as second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Item 82 authorizes a contract renewal with Granicus for public meeting livestreaming and captioning services for meetings held only in the city council chambers in the amount of $51,950.64 for fiscal year 2024, up to $55,587.18 for fiscal year 2025, and up to $59,478.29 for fiscal year 2026.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Have a motion as second. Ms. Taylor?
Okay. I was, you answered the question, I guess. I was asking about this renewal because I had constituent to, I don't know if she sent it to everybody or not, but does this renewal include live screening costs during our packet meeting? What I heard you say.
It's only for meetings. So as you saw, we had some technical difficulties this evening. This is something we do, and that's not on their end. It was on our end through this company. When we livestream a meeting, we do live captioning as required by the Americans with Disabilities Act. And so therefore, this is, we only do live streams out of this building. Last night, we videoed a meeting with our own staff, and then it gets captioned later, and we post it later. That's not a service part of this. This is one where we are live. Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Adjustment, and City Council regularly scheduled meetings are part of that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All in favor, please say aye. I'm sorry. You good? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 84 authorizes a development agreement with Land South Construction, LLC, for the for the North Donahue Cottages Development.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Mr. Griswold?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wholeheartedly support this, but I just wanted to say it's a real pleasure to see a development agreement that doesn't have a paragraph starting with "the city shall pay," whatever. You know, it's a kind of unusual thing, so I'm really glad we finally broke the code on that. So I'm ready to vote on this one.
We definitely broke the code because this is outside the city limits, and so therefore, they're responsible for paying for some improvements on Donahue, and we make them for turn lanes, even though they're not, they're in our planning jurisdiction but not part of our city limits.
Even better.
Okay, have a motion is second. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
Item eight G two appoints Jeremil Brooks and Bradley Northcutt to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for terms that begin December 1 and end November 30th, 2027.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion is second.
Previously discussed, I'll be abstaining from voting on this, so.
Okay, good. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the motion carries. Now, the motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
I moved.
Second. All right, have a motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and consent agenda is approved. Ordinances.
Item nine A is a request to apply the planned development district designation to approximately thirty acres of property with a base zone of comprehensive development district, also known as CDD. Located at the northwest corner of Richland Road and Shug Jordan Parkway, the development is known as the District at Richland. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of six to one at its September 14th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion is second. Seeing one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. Seeing a hearing now, before we open the public hearing, I do want to turn some, turn this opportunity over to Councilwoman Witten, who represents this ward. She does have a few questions and comments she'd like to make before we get started. Ms. Witten?
Sure, thank you. This has been an ongoing conversation for quite several months, and I hosted a ward meeting early on in the process and invited the applicant and the developers to present what they were planning to propose. And even since that meeting, some improvements to the development have occurred with the addition of stronger buffering on the north side and stronger landscaping on the west side of Richland, or the west side of the development. I just asked that, I know that there are quite a bit of concerns with traffic as well as the proposed density, and as we get into this, you know, once we have the public hearing and so forth, I will certainly be encouraging staff, or Megan, if I could ask some specific questions related to those issues after the public hearing is closed.
After the public hearing, and we are prepared should the council need. We have all this information that's in your packets, all the different drawings we have ready to go.
And we also did host a work session so that the council could learn in depth some additional nuances of this project. So I do think there's been quite a bit of due diligence on our behalf in the consideration of this development.
And to clarify, the work session is only a time for the council and staff to talk about things. It was open to the public, but no comment from developers or members of the public is allowed per our requirements.
You good, Ms. Witten?
Yep, I'm good.
Ms. Crouch, before we get started, just can you kind of give a summary of what the zoning is in this area and what are the possibilities that could have been potentially considered in this area, and what are the possibilities that could be considered in this area related to?
I'll give a brief overview, and then I'm going to have Kevin Howard take over from there. But the Comprehensive Development District is the most flexible zoning district in the city of Auburn. It allows everything from very low-density residential, you could have three-acre lots if you wanted to in the Comprehensive Development District, to light industrial and everything in between, commercial uses, office uses, varying types of residential units, some permitted by right and some conditional. And so everybody who lives adjacent to any property zone, Comprehensive Development District means they're not quite sure what's going to go next to them, and that's one of the reasons why we've started creating additional zones in the zoning ordinance, because this zoning ordinance is performance, well, it's a performance zoning ordinance, which means theoretically, this gentleman, Kending, who wrote the initial ordinance that we modeled ours after, thought that everything, all uses could coexist as a function of buffering and landscaping, basically. And so this district was created en masse throughout the city of Auburn, and this is a parcel sitting at two arterial roads, basically, that could have an entire shopping center on it placed tomorrow without it coming before you or the Planning Commission. It also have a number of housing types, and it could have office, and it could have a lot of things. In this particular case, the developer had choices but opted to go forward with a planned development district. The reason in part for that request was they're mixing some uses there that coincides a little more with our land use plan, and that's just something we set forward when we were looking at this property. But they did not have to avail themselves as such. They could have moved forward with a good bit of development without such a process. Mr. Howard, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that sums it up very well.
This has been CDD since, of all time?
Nineteen eighty-four.
Nineteen eighty-four.
When the zoning ordinance was created, when we did this, it's been that way this whole time.
Okay. And Beth brought this up earlier, but if we have the answers, I'd like to go ahead and start with them. The traffic was a big point of contention during the Planning Commission. What have we found out about traffic related to this project as we sit here tonight?
What are the results of the traffic study? City Engineer Fraser, will you please address that?
Yeah, the results of the traffic study are there are no adverse impacts to the development. There will be some adjustments to the signal timing, but the levels of service at the study intersections, which include the development driveways, are all within our acceptable ranges.
Signal timing, you're referring to Richland and Shug?
Yes.
And then the driveways, but what about Yarborough Farms Boulevard and Richland Road? No?
Yes, so within the study intersection, we do a one-mile radius of intersections that they look at. All of the intersections within that range were acceptable.
Ms. Fraser, the challenge, I think there's a lot of questions about the morning peak hour, which is when, in other words, when people are driving to work and dropping kids at school, what will be the impact on the people on Richland Road relative to the traffic study versus the people in the development?
There should be no difference in what they see. The delays are, I think, two seconds difference. But again, those are within our range of being acceptable.
For people that are trying to exit the development to get towards Shug Jordan Parkway, are they going to be waiting a while?
Not according to the traffic study. And if there is waiting, it's going to be inside of the development.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, yeah. So folks trying to get left out of that development will have to wait, but it should not impact more than two seconds, people traversing Richland Road.
That's correct. And the traffic study did consider the opening of Will Beegner Parkway for outbound traffic. If you come in and drop your children off at Creekside, the assumptions are that you're going to exit Richland Road via Will Beegner Parkway.
And if you live in a neighborhood that's north of Will Beegner Parkway, which is a majority of the city, at least on the west side, could exit off of, onto Will Beegner and avoid a majority of the school traffic from Richland?
Yes, ma'am. We absolutely hope that road is open anytime well before this development generates any traffic.
Can you give a sidebar to that right now, because council members keep getting questions? There is a utility relocation issue that is holding the opening of Will Beegner Parkway. It's not our intention to have a completed road or what appears to be completed, sitting, not used. However, we've got an issue. You want to just go ahead and address that?
Yeah, the utility was resolved on Friday, so the contractor is expecting to return this week. And then we'll have probably a couple of weeks left of work to do on Highway 14, and then we should be finishing the permanent striping along Highway 14. They've already done all of the permanent striping along the main roadway. They're working on the punch list, so we're getting much, much closer.
And all of that is important to have an operating traffic signal at Highway 14 and Will Beegner Parkway.
Yes, we've got to build the additional lanes to accommodate the left turn in.
One additional component that has been, a part of this conversation is a proposed or expected exit off of the development on the Shug Jordan Parkway. Can we speak to the condition that was placed upon this item by the planning, or recommended condition, and if that has been addressed or not by the applicant?
I'll have Mr. Howard go over the condition first, and then City Engineer Fraser can address what Aldott had to say.
Yes, so as you have seen in the Planning Commission resolution, as well as in the ordinance that is part of your packet, Planning Commission did add a, an additional condition in addition to the two staff conditions, and that was that a formal request be made to the Alabama Department of Transportation for a ride-in, ride-out off of Shug Jordan Parkway, and if denied, will not stop the project. So, once we received that comment, we had some additional discussions internally of staff. The applicant did hold a meeting with the Alabama Department of Transportation to discuss the specific matter. They provided us some additional insights on that. And from my perspective, and I believe the city engineer as well, this condition has been satisfied, which is a change from when that condition was additionally, or initially made at the Planning Commission.
What was the recommendation from Aldott for a proposed exit?
City Engineer Fraser, you want to address that?
Yeah, so Aldott was not necessarily in favor of the access. They concurred with the recommendation of the city and mentioned it did not meet their access management guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay. Anybody else on the council have a question they'd like to get out before we get started with the public hearing? Okay, well, now we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council on this topic, we'll ask that you please come forward, please share your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes, and the clock will be right there to be your assistant, okay? Yes, sir.
My name is Shelby D. Worley. I go by Dave. I live at 658 Villas Way and Unit 102. That's the new, relatively new condo development right across the street, right across Richland Road from where this development's going to be. First off, just a general comment. I don't understand why we need all these new condos or apartments or whatever they're going to build here, because I go around Auburn and I look and I see hundreds of new apartment buildings going up everywhere, all kinds of housing. Who's living in all these places? I mean, how much do we need with another one of these things? That's just a general comment. But I also recognize the fact this is a free country, and if these people do build this thing and go bankrupt, that's their business. So they can have at it if this is approved. Now, let's get down to the nitty-gritty here about the traffic. You said a traffic study had been done. I'd like to know a little bit more details about that. When was this study done? What day of the week? What times of the day? The only time that's really critical is between seven and eight o'clock in the morning. That's when all these cars are coming in, dropping off kids. Everybody's going to work down Richland Road towards Shug Jordan Parkway. I agree, this new cut-through that you have there will alleviate some from the back end, but it's not going to help this, because these people, if they're coming out these two entrances, are going to have to turn left to get to work or get to the university. I sit there for sometimes, I don't know, two or three minutes at least, waiting to try to turn right onto Richland Road to get out between seven and eight o'clock in the morning. I don't see how anybody's going to get out of there turning left off either one of those entrances. That's my main objection to this whole thing. I think we're going to have wrecks, we're going to have all kinds of problems with this. Now, the obvious thing would have been to put the entrances on Shug Jordan Parkway, but you've just told me that Aladott doesn't want to do that. But I still think that's the only viable option here to keep there from being major problems, people getting hurt, all kinds of bad things. So that's really what I have to say about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Who'd be next?
My name is Michael Walsh, and I live at 668 Villas Way, Unit 102. So I'm a neighbor with the previous speaker, and I'd like to point out the difficulty we have in using a turn lane on an S curve to enter our Villas, Villas Way. Under the existing traffic flow, people are cheating on the yellow line as they come around the curve towards Shug Jordan, and people behind you are cheating on the curve, and so you're being squeezed in this middle turn lane. It's an extremely dangerous situation already. I cannot believe the assumptions on this traffic study were accurate. Since no one has ever driven on Buckner, we have no real data to establish, to support any presumption at all as to what the usage will do to reduce traffic on Richland Road. If you go through with this, you are either going to have to widen the road, or you're going to have to have better police protection to ensure that people aren't speeding as they take that S curve, because someone's going to die in that turn lane if things get any worse. Every time I make that turn, I wonder if that'll be the last time I make it to my house. It's a bad situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I live at 658 Villas Way in Unit 103, so I am also part of this group from our condominium development. I'll try to be brief.
Well, you've got five minutes.
Thank you. I would like to put some numbers out there. The developer in the prospectus, in the proposal, says that they expect probably somewhere around seven hundred to seven fifty people to be living in this proposed development. That's pretty high density. They're putting in seven hundred and eighty, seven hundred and eighty parking spaces, and that doesn't include what they've allowed for retail, which is a hundred and ten. But then further on in the proposal, they say that, well, maybe, they fudge a bit, maybe they'll just assign some of the seven hundred and eighty to the retail portion. But I want you to think about seven hundred and eighty vehicles potentially exiting onto Richland Road between Shug Jordan and Yarborough Farms during the morning peak hours. Yes, we have school traffic, but we also have a lot of the population down Richland Road who work at the university, and maybe some of them will take off up William Beegner. We hope they will, but we don't know. And I just can't believe that the traffic modeling that's been done for this is based on real current data, taking into account vehicles in the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds exiting onto Richland Road at that hour of the day. I think there'll be massive traffic jams, and I would also like to say, before I get too wound up on this, remember, please, that there was a road rage incident in the parking lot at Richland Elementary School, probably two years, less than two years ago, somewhere around that, was soon after I moved in the fall of 2021. There was a gun discharge. There were children being unloaded from school buses when that happened. If it hadn't been for the school resource officer, who I believe you did honor for his work in that, hadn't been for him, could have been a whole lot worse. There were fire trucks trying to get through that traffic. There were, every police car in Auburn, I think, came. There was a helicopter that landed on the parking lot, and all of this in front of the kids. I talked to parents who parked on Villas Way, saying, "I don't know where my child is. I don't know what's happening." It was just chaotic. So please think about the fact that that did happen in Auburn, and I, you know, pray God it doesn't happen again. I hope we never have to deal with it, but I think we have to keep that in mind, that emergency vehicles may be called to one or both of those schools during the time that all of this traffic currently, the current traffic, is on Richland Road. I could say a lot more, but I think I've had my time, so thank you for your attention.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Sure, yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Kim Murdock. I live at, I'm sure you've heard from me, 688 Villas Way, Unit 103. These are my neighbors. We've had a lot of conversations about traffic, noise, the impact that we're mostly retired in our small, very low-density neighborhood, and we're worried about construction noise. We definitely wanted Aldot to look into that entrance, because that would solve a lot of problems in terms of, there is a way out other than turning left onto Richland Road. And none of us want to be in a car accident, but we just, by experiencing turning right on Richland Road in the mornings, what people living in this development will face trying to turn left. Luckily, we live in a town where most people are nice. They let people in, but it's going to be tough in the mornings with people dropping off their kids and people trying to get to work and this new development trying to turn left. My other concern is, why do we have to cut down all the trees? We have mature trees that line Richland Road. One of the nicest things about living here is we have extra-wide sidewalks. Almost everyone in my neighborhood walks down Richland Road multiple times a week. It's nice, and it's very residential feel of, while we're not living within, around campus where trees are very old, been here since I was born here, but we have that feel of a tree-lined corridor. Most of us walk all the way to Buckner where we're ready for it to open, but we're worried about if you cut all the But we're worried about if you cut all the trees down along Richland in this development and it doesn't take off or the retail doesn't work, we're going to be looking at an eyesore right across the street from us. Something I found out from Beth Whitten, luckily, letting me know about this, is we're in Ward Eight. And that was never really part of any scoping out of where's our buffer? You know, obviously they need it around South Side. But you plant trees now, when are they going to make it through the current drought that we have? By not having the entrance to ALDOT, you've got two entrances on three S curves in a fourth of a mile distance from Shug Jordan to Yarborough School. I get up early in the morning. Today I got up extra early at 4:55 because there's some construction going on there. Something was happening. I don't know if they were clearing land. Could be the current owner. I'm not saying it's the proposed developer. Is there any way to have a condition that their hours for construction are 8:00 AM to let kids go down the sidewalk? Because kids do walk to the schools. To let people like me who can enjoy sleeping and a little later sleep and not have headlights into my bedroom window every morning? You know, are there any ways to accommodate quieter, nicer, not just construction period, but when all these cars are turning left and honking their horn to turn left to get out to Shug? Are there things like that can be done? So I'm worried about the noise. I'm really disappointed that that second entrance is A, on a curve near the school and right across from me. I don't understand what was going on at 4:55 this morning, but I hope that's not going to be for the next two years. My other concern is, I've lived in Atlanta most of my adult life. I've seen where zoning takes off exponentially. I lived in the fastest-growing county, which turned into 150% capacity before high school was opened. It turned into, we can't even get to the highways from our neighborhood because we had a left turn out into a main road. And it just takes off. And all the trees were cut down. Very old, mature trees that make our town are going to be cut down. When, is there any way to save a small sliver, maybe not as much as 50 feet that South Side is getting, but maybe 10 or 15 feet? Just to have that feel that when you turn onto Richland, you're going down a neighborhood street, not a major thoroughfare, which it may be, it may get widened later. But that's what I would like y'all to consider, just some concession to, we're a density of 20 units with only 16 built.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who be next? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Joan Darrow. I live in Lundie West, 2446 Churchill Circle. I hope everybody got my communication via email. So I won't repeat. A lot of good points have been made. First mistake was putting two schools so close together. The children are not eligible for buses, so the parents bring them to school. Then they may go home or they may go on to work. The entrance to this proposed development is just above where the last school, if you're going towards Shug Jordan, is. And there's not that much space. That's a short space compared to, for the light. The light doesn't stay. If you got to turn left, boy, you better be fast because it doesn't stay on long. Secondly, I don't know about this traffic study. I invited you all to come over and experience it for yourself. We live there. We know what we have to go through during these peak hours when the schools, especially in the mornings, when people are trying to get to work. I also brought up the proposed, let me see, outer perimeter that's supposed to connect to Richland Road in 24 and 26. That may put more traffic on Richland Road. It's not going to help the school traffic. We have oodles of kids living over there. And with no bus service, the parents have no choice but to drive them there. I will say, the traffic guard at Richland Elementary is fantastic. He does an excellent job and he deserves a raise. I wanted to know if they're going to be, when this development comes out of, onto Richland Road, are they counting on our good graces to let them in, to make a left-hand turn? We'll never get out if we allow them in and people are in a hurry. I, I hope my email clarified what I'm feeling and I hope you will consider voting against this. I know it might be income for the city, but we're city residents too. We live on a street that is wide, but it's mostly single-family homes, except for the one apartment complex that's been there before most of the homes were there. So I'm just ask you to consider everything. I'm not sure a traffic study does it. I think you have to live there to experience it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who be next? Yes, sir.
Hi. My name's Scotty Smith. I live at 1114 South Ridge Court in Cypress Point, which is the adjacent subdivision. And doing a little research on the property proposed, I don't want to say it's going to be student housing, but I believe it's going to be student-focused. And I derived that from just looking at the website. And on their website, they have a, they have 23 properties, a portfolio, and they have 23 properties. And all 23 are in college towns. And all 23 tailor to students. And they're anywhere from the University of Alabama, Arkansas, Arizona State, Severlin Purdue University, Kansas, Kentucky. They're all over. And they're all around adjacent to universities. And so I don't want to use the term, this is student housing being snuck in, but I believe they're going to be student-focused and I believe that students will be marketed. Fine, you know, students need somewhere to live too. I get that. However, I, I'd hate for this to get built, this, this prime property, which I always envisioned it'd be something for the residents, the neighborhoods, the kids, or what have you. And then in five, 10 years, you know, it dries up. It's not the place to be. People move on and it'll turn into a longleaf or something like that. So that's, that's one of my concerns. I would hope that maybe we could do something different there. Now, I know we can't dictate, you know, what's going to happen, but I'd like for you to take that in consideration. Also, not to pounce on to the traffic thing. I think you are clear about that. But see, in the September 14th Planning Commission meeting, I believe it was mentioned that the traffic study that was used for that was a study from September of 2022 when the connector project was being reviewed. And since then, you know, there's been all kinds of developments that have been approved and what have you, and that are in the, in the works. So not only is all the current people that live, I would say, from Richland over to Don Hugh and then to the other side, you know, even winding back toward MLK, I don't know that the connector is really, really going to, I think we're behind on that. The connector's not going to solve all those problems. I mean, there's new Cotswolds phase coming in, 500 houses. Oak Creek subdivision, that's a couple hundred houses. The Plainsman Lake development, that's like, I don't know, multiple developments there. So there's a lot going on, on that connector that hasn't opened yet. And, and so with houses, it's going to be, okay, build one here, there, two there. So, so our traffic's going to ramp up slowly. Probably about the time this is done, where we'll have 700, boom, you know, within a short amount of time, they're going to hit those roadways. So that's why I question the validity of that traffic study. It's just, I think it's old. Unless, unless I'm misinformed and one has been done since, I'm not sure. But I'd like for that to be taken into account. You know, and if this thing isn't built, you know, it's not going to create a homeless situation for any students. I mean, it's going to be fine. We could definitely do something else. Let's see, and I jumped around here because you guys already answered some of my questions. Oh, either way, with the traffic, so just consider there is an S curve that goes through there. Two congested school zones, we've already talked about that. And then already congested intersection at Richland and Shug. I would ask that you reject this proposal development just in honor of preserving our beautiful neighborhood and continuing to provide separation of residents, families from students. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Who be next? Yes, sir.
So my name is James Burney. I live at 769 Monroe Drive in the Oaks off of Cotswolds. So I just want to ask you guys, I've reviewed the, the new traffic study and just had some questions about that. In particular, one of the things I noticed in the study, and I don't recall how many units are going in there off the top of my head. I think they said 700 people living in there or so. But I saw in the traffic study that during the peak hours, they estimated less than 100 cars through there. I think the number was like 80-something cars through there. And I think that is an underestimate of the number of people in and out of there. Even if it's not college or near college age, you're going to have families in there. And again, in that area, there's not busing, but we have two schools, which requires, you know, parents and folks to drive their kids in and out of school. So I think this number that they have going through that study is not going to be correct. And again, I think the assumption of that new road, it's, it's great to assume data, but again, we have no real-life data off of that road yet to see how many people are actually going to use that? How many people are going to turn right and take the time to go down 14 if they have to go left onto Shug Jordan, right? No, we probably won't get very many people to go that way. So my major concern again is the traffic. I drive through that every day. And it takes a lot of planning and making sure that if you leave at a certain time or exit at a certain time, that you get through there to do that. So again, I just wish that the traffic study had been done after this road that we assume is going to relieve traffic, after that road had been opened and we could see how much was actually going to be off of there, instead of assuming that it's going to relieve traffic before we even approve this, you know, build. So my request would be to delay the approval until this road is open. We're saying the road would open potentially in a couple weeks. At that point in time, could we not do another traffic study with the new road open that would allow us to get real-time data of how many people are turning that direction as opposed to just assuming that this road was built to relieve traffic and that's exactly what it's going to do? That's my fear. Again, we're building, putting in multiple families into an area there. And what if we build that place and then we need more room to expand the intersection at Shug and Richland? I'm not an engineer, but it certainly doesn't have a whole lot of room there the way that angled intersection is to redo that intersection if, after the fact, this project gets approved? And now we have to go back and look at other ways to relieve the traffic? I'm not sure that intersection could be redone with what is there and what isn't with the terrain and hills and all of those things there. So again, my consideration to you guys would be that we just maybe delay the approval to see the actual data that comes in on the road that's supposed to relieve traffic. So thank you guys for the consideration.
Mr. Burney, how long have you lived in the Oaks?
We moved there since 2018.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry. How are y'all doing? My name's Jonathan McCall. I live at 976 Titleless Way. It's in the Auburn University Club community. My wife and I have lived there since 2021 and it is just a perfect community. I love my area. You know, this is going to be a little break from the previous speakers. I'm actually very much in favor of this as a commercial real estate broker. There's nothing better in a neighborhood area with walking amenities than neighborhood retail, somewhere to go get coffee in the morning, somewhere to take your kid for after-school tutoring or maybe go watch a football game with your buddies. You know, I think, you know, the proposed access off Shug could be dangerous. I mean, you're going 55 miles an hour trying to catch up to traffic. I think that should be considered. You know, I think Auburn definitely encourages a healthy lifestyle. We have wide crock, we have wide sidewalks. And so I think it would just encourage people to maybe take their cars less to this development and possibly walk more, maybe use a golf cart. Don't tell the guy to give me a ticket for using it on the street. But I am very much in favor of this. My wife and I, we, we just, we need a UPS and some food over there. That's what I'm going to say to that. So I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Corey Webb, 672 Shawnee Street. Really just getting involved more with the council again. Don't have anything to do with this, but as somebody that has been on Richland Road building for years and years, one, I want to commend the city on how y'all have treated Richland Road. I know a lot of people, I think seven people have a concern here. I don't know who the longest-living one is there, but I can remember a lot of people lived on Richland Road that had acres of land back there probably when we've had umpteen neighborhoods come in. And the city's done such a great job of working on it with the last expansion and working it. But it is a growing town. And I, I understand everybody, nobody wants to be put out with traffic. But how long go, how many rooftops are there y'all have worked on and done a good job? I'm sure when it was a dirt road, people had the same feeling that when they put in what Lundie Chase or whatever some of the first ones were back there. But I commend y'all for always making sure and addressing that we're working forward with that to get people moving here. I know it's tough for everybody when a town's growing like this and everybody wants to live here. But the city always does a good job. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Anyone else? The developer representatives are here. I don't know if one of you gentlemen would like to come forward and make some comments? We might have some questions for you.
Can we close the public hearing and then?
Okay. We want to do that? Close that public hearing?
Yeah, if they want to make statements not relative to your questions, they need to come up now. Otherwise, then you can ask them questions. That's the pleasure of the council.
Anyone else from neighborhood or public? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
I do have some questions of the applicant.
Yeah, so if the applicant could send a representative forward.
Well, it's person Whitten. Do you need any drawings up or at this time?
It would be helpful, I think, for the sake of these conversations to have the drawing of the...
Want the overall or you want?
The cross, let's address the buffering first and then...
Okay. So hold on, we're going to bring it up and, and Mr. Howard will have control of it once Greg brings it up. So give him just a second here. He was fixing everything else, so we...
And just for the record, Blake Rice, Barrett Simpson.
Thanks, Blake. Just a second, he's swapping over. There we go. Kevin will get us there to the map that you're referring to or drawing about buffering.
I do think I saw that my 280 Dodge Omni was, a 1980 Dodge Omni was in there somewhere.
This the one you would like to refer to? Okay.
We, we did receive an email from you. We, we did receive an email from you, you know, in reference to the buffering, and I wanna ask the question of staff and then of you as well, Mr. Rice, that the required buffering on, on the north side that is adjacent to the AU Club, that you are proposing a undisturbed buffer of thirty feet, an additional undisturbed buffer of seventeen feet, and then supplemental landscaping, and then the yard of the less dense product in your development. Can you talk, so that's an equivalent of eighty-five feet? I guess my first question to staff is what is the minimum buffer requirement for that edge?
Mr. Howard?
It would be fifteen feet.
Okay. So, you're doing, that would be an additional seventy feet that's not required?
Yes, so, to be clear, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but so the minimum buffer is a fifteen feet. That is a complete tear-down, replanted fifteen-foot buffer. In lieu of a, a complete wash of the current foliage, what we have proposed is a thirty-foot undisturbed that just, you know, will, will take the place of that fifteen-foot buffer. And then on top of that, as topography allows and dictates, we will leave anywhere from an additional seventeen feet upwards of almost that entirety of, I believe, sixty-five feet in places will be left undisturbed. And that's all dictated by the engineering and the topography of the site. So, anywhere within that sixty-five feet that is, that trees are having to be removed for construction, it is our intention to replant that area. So, what you'll have is a minimum undisturbed buffer of, I believe, forty-five feet, and then in places up to sixty-five, and then anywhere that, within that sixty-five-foot buffer is removed, it will be replanted in that last twenty feet. And then you have a, an additional twenty-foot backyard for these, this less dense product, which is, you know, strategically, obviously been placed near the single-family subdivision. So, what you end up with is effectively an eighty-five-foot setback for these units with sixty-five feet of that being planted or currently left undisturbed in its current position.
And then, as well, on the west side, Rich, that abouts Richland Road, the landscaping proposal, your original plan was just the minimum and based off of constituent comments and so forth, the developer has agreed to additional buffering on, along Richland. Is that correct?
That's correct. What the developer is intending to do is while it would be wonderful to be able to leave some areas undisturbed there, I did hear one citizen make a mention of, you know, maybe even a ten-foot. A ten-foot undisturbed buffer is a, it's, it's nothing, it's very sparse, it looks bad. So, and the topography of this site is such that once under development, there's really no ability to leave the majority of the Richland Road right-of-way as undisturbed. So, what we've, what we've done is taken the code minimum landscaping and added an additional ninety large caliper trees, high-growth, you know, trees that will grow into mature timber along that Richland Road right-of-way, which the code minimum is essentially two trees per, per hundred foot. And you can see that that has been grossly outnumbered and improved upon. We do have a potential in the far northwestern corner, based on grading, it's unknown at this time, because, you know, the, the site hasn't been fully engineered, that we might have the ability to leave some of that far northwestern area as undisturbed. You can see it being left as green right there next to the entrance. How much of that? I mean, our intention is to leave as much as engineering will absolutely allow, because we would love to have it. But other than that, we're, we're really, the developer has gone above and beyond to add additional landscaping back in to Richland Road right-of-way.
And as far as open space, minimum requirements for open space for this project is around twenty-five percent?
Correct. Minimum requirement for the residential portion is twenty-five percent. Overall, for the entirety of the site, they are providing twenty-seven percent. And if you look at, again, just the residential portion, they are providing thirty-five percent open space for that portion.
Okay. And then there was a question about density, and, and is this being developed with a student focus? Can you speak to the density and the, and the marketing of this product?
Absolutely. And we've all seen this process play out over, over the years in, in different manners on, you know, student-driven housing. This is a non-student-driven housing development. This is a family development. Staff has reviewed the architecture. We all know that there are certain architectural, internal architectural facets that really drive student housing. I would lean on staff to respond to their, what they have seen in the architecture. This is not geared towards the, the bed bath parity that we've all heard about. We don't, we don't have that going on, and students, students tend to lean more towards a certain type of internal unit and certain type of amenities. And this project, while, yes, one, one gentleman did mention that this is a company that does do student housing, yes, they do, but they also do market-rate housing that is not student-driven. And Auburn has, you know, been identified as one that is needing market-rate family, multifamily units. And that's, that's what you have before you. And, you know, as far as, that, that also leads into some of the concerns. I heard multiple occasions about the seven hundred and eighty parking spaces proposed for this development. City of Auburn zoning ordinance requires a certain number of parking spaces based on the number of bedrooms in, in a, in a complex. That is not based on expected drivers. This is a family development. That is seven hundred and eighty spaces as required by zoning ordinance. And, but when you start having, you know, two-bedroom and three-bedroom and, you know, a handful of four-bedroom units that are family-oriented units, no, that's not all drivers. So, I, I would remind everyone that that is a, that is a requirement, but I really don't expect seven hundred and eighty vehicles to be anywhere in this complex at any time. But that's the, that's the ordinance, and, you know, you're meeting the intent of it.
And the density of this project as proposed is less than what CDD allows of nine-point five. It's being proposed at nine-point oh-four per acre.
That is correct.
Okay. And then, back on the student focus, these are not being, are these being leased by the bedroom or by the unit?
No, these are, these, this will be unit-driven leasing. There will be no leasing by the bedroom in this complex.
Okay. And then the elephant in the ring is the traffic. Can you speak to the traffic study that was conducted and, and address some of the concerns of when it was, when it was conducted and whether or not Will Beakner Parkway being open, not have, not having been open at the time of the study, the impact of that on the study?
Sure. I will, I will give it my best shot. I will be the first to admit I am not a traffic engineer. I do have with me tonight the, the author of this traffic study, but I think the majority of this is more general in term, and I will, I'll try to address that. So, the, one of the questions was about the, when was the study done? And were all of these items taken into account? So, what you saw was a reference to not when the study was done, it was when the counts were taken. The counts were taken per City of Auburn regulations while all schools are in session. And that's not a, somebody goes out there and counts traffic for one hour. That is a set of traffic counters are placed out there, and they are, they are run for a specified amount of time so that you get normalized traffic, you get AM peak, you get PM peak. There, I'll be the first to tell you that those, those counts were, I think it was referenced, they were taken September of two thousand twenty-two. So, there's really been very little actual new housing taken, you know, actually finished and completed and moved into on Richland Road in that time. But anything that was not completed was accounted for in the traffic estimates. And that includes all of the existing, I think I, I heard someone mention that there was five hundred Cotswolds units. I believe that number's really closer to two hundred new units has been approved. But all that was taken into account, because those are, that is developable area where projects have already been approved, and that's accounted for in the traffic estimates. As far as Will Beakner Parkway is concerned, if specifics are needed, I would, I would need some help from the traffic engineer. But the, there were very small amounts of traffic a-actually can, you know, used during this traffic study and saying that it would be placed on Will Beakner. I believe the, the traffic engineer can tell you that he, he believes he was overly conservative with the amount of traffic that he said would actually go to Will Beakner, simply to make sure that we didn't run into an issue of, hey, we can't just say all of this traffic's gonna start taking the new road. The, the traffic study reflects everyone's opinion that it is, that the traffic that will use Beakner is actually more than what is reflected in the traffic study.
Any other questions? I'm good.
Mr. Rice, just based on your experience, there was a number of comments about people concerned about the folks turning left in the morning to get out of the development and how that can impact the morning rush hour traffic. In y'all's estimation, I mean, are y'all confident that that's gonna work in the morning time especially?
Yes, sir. I, I really am, and especially when you get new, new residents to an area. You, you gotta imagine that you, you, you bring into an area new residents, you get this Parkway open, some of these residents are gonna immediately go, well, why wouldn't I? They don't have traffic patterns in mind. Why wouldn't they turn right and go to Will Beakner? If they decide to try to turn left, what we have at both intersections is dedicated right and left turn lanes inside the development. So, anyone that wants to turn left has a dedicated area where they can wait to turn left if they have to. So, if you do see any potential delays, those are internal to the development and on private property. It's not affecting Richland Road right-of-way and the traffic on such.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Speak to the, the retail piece of this, the interest there. I think there's concern that maybe that it's something that's gonna not progress quickly as, as maybe the housing piece of this.
So, the commercial area will be infrastructure. What you will have is a set of construction drawings that come in one phase to the, to the city staff for approval. All the infrastructure as it relates to utilities servicing this, the, the road servicing this commercial area are all gonna be part of the same set of construction drawings. The grading is such, and the topography is such, that you really cannot build the residential separate from the commercial area. So, all of the heavy construction work for this is gonna have to be done all in one project. After that, you could have this commercial area be right behind the residential area in terms of opening, but when you look at build times, once you get into this site, the residential portion of this is gonna all open at one time. So, you have a twenty-four-month build time on the residential portion. You don't have, once the commercial gets started, the build time on that commercial area is much, much less than that. So, truthfully, you could have that commercial open prior to the residential, or it could follow shortly thereafter. The interest that the developer has received on the commercial, I think, has even surprised them. There, there's been much interest into what, into this commercial area by a variety of commercial guys. So, I, I can't tell you exactly what day. What I can tell you is it will all be, heavy construction will go together, and there's potential for it to be open at any point.
Thank you. And then, touch, maybe the developer touch on this. Obviously, there's a market study was, was probably performed prior to deciding on buying a piece of property, but can you speak to the market study at all that showed saturation levels or as far as?
I could not. I have not seen a, a market study. I would have to revert to the developer if there's any, you know, information on that. I can do so after I finish my questions, or he can, they can come up now.
Any other questions for Mr. Rice? Okay. Thank you, man.
Thank y'all.
You'd like, would you like the developer?
Yeah, that, yeah.
That'd be all right. So, it'd be the council's wishes.
Hi, Mo. Frank Rokio with Trinestas Ventures in Indianapolis, Indiana. To address the market study, we did do a substantial market study, and currently, market-rate housing in Auburn is at ninety-four to ninety-five percent full. So, there's a, only a five percent vacancy rate in, in current multifamily in Auburn.
Okay. And that's market rate?
Yes, sir.
Not student?
Correct. Students actually, it's more highly occupied. It's about ninety-nine to a hundred.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Any other questions, this gentleman? Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Yep, thank you. Okay. Any comments from the, comments, thoughts from the council?
I, I do wanna just make a few comments. I value each of the constituents who have spoken, emailed, communicated. I know this is, appears to be a less than perfect project, but from developments that I have seen take place over the course of my tenure on this council, this is one of the most more thought-out, more pinpointed and communicated developments that I've seen. The developer immediately jumped on board to be a part of the conversation. They did not hide from what their plans were. They even made concessions when, when asked by both staff on the commercial piece of this. The original proposal had zero commercial, and they went from five thousand square feet in commercial up to twenty thousand square feet in commercial in order to, to really meet the future land use of this corner. The additional buffering and landscaping and green space allocation is, I think, commendable from someone who has seen developers clear-cut property and, and, and not go back with only the minimum. And I do appreciate the attention to densifying in the center of the project as opposed to the external pieces of the project and containing this as a lifestyle project on their site. I, I do recognize and understand that the exits off of Richland do give pause, but regardless if we were to approve this or not, any project that would go there, as demonstrated by Aldott's disapproval of an exit off of Chug, would require exits and entrances off of Richland. Whether that's fully commercial or if it's fully residential, that, that would still be an issue or a concern of constituents regardless of what would be approved. The, the gift that we're given this evening as a council with this development is that we have a say in it. We get to say, if we choose to, what commercial goes on this, or, you know, what commercial types go on here. We get to say that we think that the buffering is acceptable and above what is the minimum. We get to, you know, encourage the in and out and the stacking internally and the sidewalks that are gonna be a part of this project and the infrastructure improvements. So, we, we have the opportunity to have say. If we were to not approve this project, then the opportunity exists for us to not ever have a say. And that is, I think... And that is, I think, um, a dangerous position to put, um, planning into and our, um, our constituents in. So the fact that we have a say, the fact that we get to have a part of the conversation, that the developer has been willing to make, um, concessions and improvements based off of the conversations over the course of quite a bit of time, I think, speaks to the type of development that they expect to put here. And for those reasons, I, I feel strongly that this is the right thing to approve, um, for this corner.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A couple of, of the citizens had questions that I wondered if we could answer.
Sure.
Ms. Murdock, I believe, asked about, uh, construction times. When, when, when are those disruptions happening and what does, what does our ordinances dictate?
I wanna have, um, our chief building official remind me, Mr. Hor, that, that this is comprehensive development district zone property. Is it, is it a zoning thing or is it residential abutting?
It's single-family residential abutting. It's, it would be 7:00 AM to?
7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. For exterior work making noise, I wanna, I wanna clarify that if they're inside buildings and not disturbing people by painting and things like that, they are allowed to work later.
So it's 7 o'clock, that would be, uh, the?
Start time.
Start time. And if, if it's prior to that, the residents have every right to be able to call us on a non-emergency number.
They do. Mr. Hor, along with some of our engineering inspectors have been working diligently. We've received a number of complaints lately. They are very active in doing this. And time changes do affect daylight. We actually typically have more trouble in the summertime when we have longer hours of sun than we do right now. But we've been receiving complaints citywide and those are things we follow up on. Auburn PD also responds, the police department does, after hours to these things. And we do, and routinely shut construction sites down that are violating. However, um, we do need assistance of citizens and we do respond. And even when they've called and we don't catch them in the act, we do reach out to whoever's pulled the permit to remind them with a very strong reminder to knock it off. So.
Thank you. The other, uh, question that I recall, well, I think was shared among many, uh, I think it was Mr. Bernie who had some feelings about the traffic study itself. I, it, it, I have a problem with traffic studies in the way, we, we hear that the traffic, i- it is an acceptable level, but I, I always seem to miss out on the nuance of, yes, it's acceptable level for X amount of hours, but it's an unacceptable level for, for people commuting, you know, in the two peak times. Is there, uh, is there a, I don't know, is there a, is the traffic volume taken over the 24 hours to get to your acceptable level? Or is there a moment in that, in, in your 24 hours where it is simply unacceptable? Is there an unacceptable level in its peak? If you understand my question?
Real quick. So you're, one of the things you have to understand about traffic studies, we have to set standards of which we hold people by. So we can't pick and choose, we can, we can pick and choose the standards, but then we can't deviate and say, well, you must meet this standard. But now we think you don't meet it because, you know, we have to have empirical data that justifies whatever we're doing. So one of the challenges here, and Allison's about to talk about, are requirements for what we call levels of service. And those run A to F, correct, Allison? And levels of service, A means you can just go whenever you want to go and so on. And we have different requirements for that. And as a matter of fact, our requirements are tougher, um, than a lot of our developers would like because we expect a higher level of service. But she'll, she'll talk through that. One of the challenges is our perception of traffic and the reality of what goes into a study are two very different things. And that frustrates people. It frustrates our staff as well at times. However, we can't just pick out of the air by project because of, of perceptions. We have to tie it to some empirical data to be able to hold people accountable for what they're doing. Allison?
What she said. Uh, we actually look at the peak hour movements to determine those levels of service. The ADT or average daily traffic is another, um, metric that we use to evaluate traffic. So they're actually two different things, but we look at peak hour and the impacts of those.
So in this case, how do, how does Richland Road fare in the, in the grading in those most traveled times?
So we have, and I don't have the actual level of service handy, I think it's a D. We establish acceptable levels of service, um, that we have in our design manual, that, as Megan mentioned, are a little more stringent than other communities. So based on the standards that we established, more than 10, wow, more than 10-plus years ago, they're within those ranges. Does that make, did I answer your question?
Yes.
So at a peak hour at our major intersections and other things, we're very rarely able to achieve something better than D. And what, what does that mean? It means for developers to, um, and there is quite a bit that goes on behind the scenes of, I call it negotiating, but, uh, the most phone calls I get are that we're being too difficult, which is the city engineer holds everybody's feet to the fire of how are you going to mitigate the lettable of service in which you're creating? So you heard her mentioning something a while ago about signal timing. So there's a minor change to signal timing. And yes, sometimes even when they get tweaked, they get out of sync and we have to retime them again because storms wreak havoc on us. But sometimes mitigation is they have to contribute toward intersection improvements or do other things. But level of service D in the morning peak hour, it would not be surprising at this intersection at, at Richland and Shug. And that's mainly for the people on Richland as opposed to those on Shug. One of the challenges here is the perception is, and I don't disagree with everybody's perception, that this is gonna wreak havoc. And, and you heard some residents that live across the street say, how are these people going to get out left when we can't get out right? And there are, Donahue and Moore's Mill experienced the very same thing from a number of developments in the morning. And, and people get, um, the city engineer doesn't love when they do this, they get in the center lane. And they get across one lane because there's not a ton of inbound Richland. There is in the morning, but not a ton, um, because some people do come from outside that area toward the schools. They have to sit there until somebody lets them over. And theoretically, the people of Yarborough Farms won't love this, but you can also turn right out of here and go through Yarborough Farms toward Donahue, depending on where you're headed in the city. Um, and I don't want to scare everybody in Yarborough Farms development, but that is also a city street that goes straight through there. It's not fast and it shouldn't be, but there are other outlets besides Will Beekner Parkway. So behavior will be dictated by people's commute. But a lot of people in the city are dealing with a similar condition. And it is perfectly understandable that everyone on Richland Road feels like, why would you exacerbate this further? One of the challenges is everybody that lives further back still has to get out. And that's, that's one of the rub points. You also heard a woman mention, um, she was very concerned or said, what, what about the outer loop? The outer loop, um, items that are in the compre-, or the capital improvement plan are in 2026 and 2028, Allison had put, and those are not currently funded. They're an idea of what we would fund, design, not construction of any portion of the outer loop. And in work session we had last night, we talked about the fact that I want to move up to Richland to Mrs. James piece. And, you know, everybody can say, well, great, that doesn't get us into the middle of Auburn. Understood. And that can put more traffic down on Richland Road. I understand what they're saying, but we have to get pieces of this built. Um, one of those other pieces that was slated for design is Richland to Highway 14. We do not have, and I repeat, that is one of our most difficult sections of right of way to acquire, is getting that piece done because we have very big challenges getting that done. However, uh, we spent over $8 million on Richland Road that nobody helped us with and no developers paying for. We have a small contribution from the Plainsman Hills, Plainsman Row, what's it, what are we calling that? Plainsman Development?
Plainsman Lake.
Thank you. Plainsman Lake, we've had a lot of Plainsman developments, a small contribution toward parts of that. But the city itself to relieve traffic in that area, spending over $8 million to build that road to try to help. Um, and it was also with great intention to have a signalized intersection at Martin Luther King Drive slash Highway 14. And Will Beekner, we were not gonna build a road without that. And there will also be one at Webster Road unless the city engineer corrects me and something has changed. So both Webster and Highway 14, which will also help other people. So folks in Willow Creek right now, um, have the ability to get to that. And we have other people, other developments off of Richland Road also connect, even though it is through a neighborhood directly to Will Beekner Parkway. I do think there is accuracy in that we do not know the exact behavior, but the model was conservative as you've heard from the engineer.
Thank you.
Yeah. And one thing I failed to mention, Councilman Parsons, in addition to our standards, we use federal guidelines to, to, um, develop our traffic studies. It's not just the city warrants requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
But they are not perfect and nobody, it's, it, it is, it's a measuring stick, trying, trying to gauge what will happen. And driver behavior does change. There's no question about that.
Anyone else have a comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Griswold.
Excuse me, has there been any consideration for signalizing either of these exits onto Richland Road?
They would not meet any signal warrants. So no, no consideration.
They wouldn't meet the city's signal warrants? Because it's?
The signal warrants.
Correct.
We use the federal manual on uniform traffic control devices to warrant signals. And with a small development like this, it would not warrant.
Even with all the, uh, traffic coming down Richland Road?
That's my suspicion, but yeah. They did not run a signal warrant analysis, but just based on my experience, it would not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Most of my questions have been answered, but I want to state them anyway. First of all, I like the looks of the place. I appreciate the buffers. I appreciate even the traffic study. But if we get to that point where we say, oh, my goodness, we've made a mistake. The things that you have just spent quite a bit of time, uh, discussing, um, from an engineering standpoint, uh, give me some level of confidence, I think, that if we made a mistake, we can fix it. We can, uh, put traffic signals in or we can, uh, campaign to have a, an exit onto Shug Jordan Parkway. But we'll find a way, is what I think that we're saying here. Is that accurate?
Well, what we have to say is the city staff has established and the council has adopted standards that are in our engineering, design and construction manuals as well as the zoning ordinance. And what the staff is saying is this development complies with those standards. And so that is why they're recommending proceeding. I want to be clear, if they were not doing a planned development district overlay, you would not see this development. Now, they might have some different housing types. I can acknowledge that, but the very same traffic study and very same scrutiny about buffers and other things would have gone by staff. However, there wouldn't be the width of the buffer on the north side. The developer, even if staff asked, would be not compelled also to widen out the buffer that's abutting Richland Road. Um, we can ask for those things when it has the gravity of the planning commission, city council behind it. You know, sometimes people are a little more willing. But a development can go here 100% commercial, probably, how, I don't know how many hundred thousand square feet can go here.
Several hundred thousand square feet.
You can fit a lot of which no one would have been notified because it's a permitted by right use and there wouldn't have been any dialogue per se unless the developer decided to approach with adjacent neighborhoods and we'd have very same driveways and traffic studies going on. And so, um, let's just say that people have, do have the right to develop property. And one of the things the staff did very early on is work with the developer and encourage them to pursue a planned development district for this very reason, to give everybody the opportunity to know about it and see about it. And they were amenable to doing so from day one as we began working with them. And there was a rub with staff very early because this is of the land use planning, we wanted to see commercial in this area and it did grow, as Councilwoman Witten said, from five thou-, nothing to 5,000 square feet to 20. And so we, we're big on serving neighborhoods with commercial and we do hope, as somebody mentioned, um, there's also one thing we've neglected to talk about is, you know, there is a sidewalk that is now gonna be running along this side of the street and we may find, be able to find a way, we discussed this in your work session, to get it all the way up to Yarborough Farms Boulevard, which helps some people get down to the commercial and get their kids to school on foot instead of getting out in the traffic pattern, which would be our hope.
I'm good.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for the staff? Ms. Crowds, Mr. Walsh mentioned, uh, it's dangerous scenario where people are trying to hop into the turn lane really quickly on some of these S-curves. Have we had any report from public safety that things out there are getting a little dicey and people are impatient and we've had some?
I'll ask the Public Safety Executive Director, Will Matthews, and see if he has any knowledge of that.
So we have the typical complaints, uh, that usually focus around the beginning of the school year, uh, for traffic congestion. We try to mitigate those best we can, uh, with increased in, uh, presence of the patrol vehicles and, uh, and the good work that they do. But, uh, I don't know that we've had any specific complaints to that.
If residents are concerned about people driving dangerously out there, they can call the non-emergency number and file a report, correct?
Certainly. And anywhere in the city, we always encourage those reports, uh, when motorists see other vehicles that are acting in a dangerous manner.
And it's not uncommon when citizens reach out, what happens? A lot of you have reached out to me with constituent concerns. That means it gets on a hot sheet and at times we'll sit a patrol unit out there to, also, it's interesting, once the unit goes out there, people behave a little differently. And so sometimes we do a saturation patrol or we place people out there at random times to, as a gentle reminder. And we're always happy to do that. That's, that's why we're out on patrol.
Ms. Crowds, as we move ahead here, just, would you just remind everybody in the room what we're voting on here for PDD?
I'll have Mr. Howard go over. It's a, it's a planned development district overlay that is basically approving the housing unit piece of this and the commercial piece, but you have a follow-on action as a conditional use that is the actual commercial uses themselves. Mr. Howard?
That is correct. So the, um, item before you here with the PDD, um, is simply a PDD overlay for the existing CDD zoning district. There is part of their request, which you've seen here and also in your packet, is for 275 multifamily units. They proposed to build those out in a variety of building types, but they are all multi- multifamily units. So there's that component, which is the majority of the property. And then the remainder of the property that's up at the corner, uh, six or so acres, uh, would be commercial, 20,000 square feet of commercial. And as City Manager mentioned, um, in the following conditional use approval, um, uses are being requested for that, um, commercial area.
And then there were conditions that came from the planning commission that reside in your ordinance. And two of them were there at the recommendation of staff and a third one came along. And that was per our corridor overlay regulations, all proposed commercials shall address Shug Jordan Parkway and Richland Road, which means we're not gonna look at backs of buildings in, in quite that way. And it said a minimum of a 30-foot undisturbed buffer shall be placed along the northern property line. You've had discussion tonight that developers offering to do a larger one. And last was the formal request to Aldott about the Shug Jordan Parkway driveways.
All right, thank you. All right. Counsel, have any final comments before we move ahead with the vote?
I just, uh, for clarity, uh, to make sure that people are aware of what a PDD is and what the, what the promise of a PDD is, in the event that any of this before us is altered significantly, it must come before us again in council, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So if the commercials say they decided they wanted to do all residential, that would have to come back to you. Can't do it without coming back. So, um, and so that also means this survives time. If the zoning ordinance changes and would no longer allow such things in this area, they are, they will have the right to build this for the long term as long as they stick with this plan. Substantive changes have to return to you.
Correct. And that's at the discretion of the planning director.
The, the commercial development director, who was the interim planning director, is excited about the arrival of the permanent planning director.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? You know, when this first came up, I'll have to admit, I, I was disappointed. I was, I really would have liked to have seen a more commercial emphasis at this corner. There are a number of rooftops on Richland Road, there's two elementary schools. And, uh, it would have been my hope that there'd been a lot of reasons for people not to have to get out on Shug Jordan Parkway, but to stay within that area up there to receive some of their daily needs and fulfill some of their daily habits. As Ms. Witten so eloquently said a while ago, with the CDD zoning, we might not even have this meeting here tonight, that there was permitted rights for the developer to do a number of things. And because I think, I believe that they're quality developers, they sat to, at the table with our staff and they worked through, uh, some of the nuances and wishes, they listened to the citizens and the dais appear and added some things that I believe make this a potentially really great development. I'm shocked that market rate apartments are 95% full in our community. We've seen so many of them built on Glen Avenue here in the last few years, but if those are 95% full, wow, that's very interesting where all these people are coming from to live in our community. And I think that's only a compliment to who we are as Auburn. So I'm, I'm very hopeful, everything I have learned, uh, about this, this group of people is that they do quality work. They have said publicly that they're not focused on students, um, that they're focused on families and professionals and other people that are not going to class every day. I just want to tell Beth, thank you for digging in. She dug in with her. She dug in with her constituents, she dug in with the developers, she dug in with the staff. And I believe she dug in with all of us who had questions to try to get us to a point here where we've got a resolution here tonight. But I do plan on supporting this.
All right, Allison.
Yeah, I just want to say through all of that, just to make sure everybody aware of that. And I asked this question in our meeting that we had. This is, all these new development as far as residential is rental.
Ready else?
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Hoblins?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Under resolutions, item 10A is a request for conditional use approval of various uses for the district at Richland Road located at the northwest corner of Shug Jordan Parkway and Richland Road in the comprehensive development district zoning district with now a planned development district overlay. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its September 14 meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion second. This time I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address city council about this, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. And you'll have five minutes to speak to the council. No one? We'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
Could we just walk through, for the sake of our constituents, what we're, what uses we are looking at that would be approved?
It's quite a lengthy list, but go ahead, Mr. Howard.
Yes. So as mentioned earlier, with a PDD, all uses are conditional. So we had a sit down with the developer when they first came to us, went through the uses and, you know, kind of whittled this down to essentially the requests that you have before you tonight. So there is a lengthy list, but there's still a fraction of a lot of the uses that we have out there. So first one, outdoor recreation use, private park. Institutional uses, daycare center, private libraries and museums. Indoor recreational uses, billiards, bowling alleys, gymnasiums, indoor athletic facilities. Office use. Commercial and entertainment uses, banks, barber shop slash beauty shop, book hobby, music and sporting goods stores, grocery stores, hardware stores, health and personal care stores, lounge, office supplies, stationary gift stores, package stores, pet and pet supply stores, professional studios, restaurants, specialty food stores, theaters, indoor auditoriums, veterinary clinic. Road service uses would include banquet drive-through, convenience stores, slash small grocery stores, less than 3,000 square feet and no fuel. Fast food restaurant with drive-through. Public service uses, municipal offices or facilities and neighborhood shopping centers. One thing I did want to mention just briefly in regards to those drive-through uses is those would be intended for the drive-through as shown on the site plan as well as part of this packet.
That's just the one northern interior building, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And no fuel for this location?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, any change to this would have to come back to you, should you approve it.
Okay. Thank you.
Drive-throughs have to be approved again, or this is?
No. So that's part of the, part of agreeing to be in a planned development district. If you guys approve the uses upfront and identify a location for such a drive-through, then that can be, it's approved now and remains. But in the case of a gas station, would not be allowed at this stage unless it came back to you.
So which building is, would we be okay with drive-through use? Is it any of them, or is it just a specific?
It's the one to the far left.
Correct.
Okay.
You can see a little kind of skinny alleyway behind it is the best way to describe it. That's a drive-through.
Okay, thank you.
And any change to this design, the way the drive-through is done, comes back through us, or?
So there, you know, if there is a very slight minor change to, let's say, how it is, you know, the length of it or something like that there, it'd ultimately be up to the planning director's discretion of whether that would be a major change or a minor. If you, you know, if, for example, they came through and wanted to do a drive-through right up on one of the other buildings, that would absolutely be considered a major change and would come back before the planning commission and council.
Yeah, so it's up to the interpretation of the planning director whether or not it's a major change. He's ready, look at him.
Okay. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B authorizes the purchase of 23 Dodge Durango Pursued SUVs for the police department from Stivers Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram in the total amount of $966,384.28.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments, questions?
Yes, Mr. Murray, I have a question.
Please.
The memorandum states that Auburn City Schools has committed to provide funding towards the expansion of our police fleet. And I think, let's see, how many of these are for expansion?
Ten.
Ten.
Ten, yes.
So what is the level of contribution from Auburn City Schools?
For this year, they are funding, fully funding one vehicle, which we're allowed to use. This, these are going on patrol, but we're cycling our older vehicles into the, we call it the school resource officer program, because the request was for the school year to have a marked vehicle at every school for that presence. And so part of our negotiation was that. Do you have anything else to add?
That's correct. We would like to have at least one marked unit at every school campus. And they've committed to assisting with that effort, whether it be, as in this year, funding one full vehicle, purchase and outfit, or modifying some of the other vehicles that we've moved over.
Are there future contributions from them towards this expansion planned?
I can't speak to the level of funding, but I do know that they're favorable in keeping this program active.
And I fully support having the one marked vehicle at each school. I just want to know who's going to wind up footing the bill.
Yeah, we will also be kind of cycling some things that we might normally cycle out of our fleet will leave. And we do need functional vehicles here. And as you see, the ones that we're replacing in your packets, a lot of things are very, very high mileage and high maintenance. But we're working through that. But this request came a little bit late, too, for us to be caught up in a number of things. I also want to point out that the Dodge Durangos were a no-choice situation, why we are not sad about it, but this is, we're not out there to catch any one because we have Ford Explorers, Chevy Tahos and Dodge Durangos. These are what's offered on state contract with proper police engines and other things and things that are upfit on the vehicles for the needs of the police. So it was not our desire to have three different styles of vehicles in our fleet. It's what's available at the right price.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10C authorizes the transfer of $2.8 million identified in the fiscal year 2023 and 2024 capital improvement plan for industrial property to the Industrial Development Board of the City of Auburn for the purchase of approximately 160 acres of property located on Lee Rohn Dine, also known as Biltmore Lane.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Looking at the, excuse me.
Your froggy voice is hard to hear tonight, Kelly.
Rough tonight. Looking at the map, there's a section of land just above the IDB-owned land that is apparently not in the industrial.
Are you referring, there is a strip, if you are holding it in a landscape to the right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, that is not owned by the industrial board.
Okay, is the industrial board interested in that strip as well?
The industrial board has long been interested in that strip, but, Mr. Dunlap, we have not been able to acquire it, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
It's isolated on either side. We own on both sides of it.
Got you.
And below it, yeah. And above it, yeah.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10D authorizes a $525,000 loan to Indian Pines Public Park Authority for additional construction costs related to Pines crossing golf course improvements.
Move for approval.
Second. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have no other business, and those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
This time we'll open the citizens' open forum. If you'd like to address the city council about anything, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to do that.
Robert Wilkins, 261 Denson Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. It's official, I'm sorry, Greed has built the modern Auburn while ignoring Auburn citizens' concern. It's official, the City of Auburn has won the Alabama Supreme Court decision, Dixon versus City of Auburn, with a 9-0 decision on October 27, 2023, with access to endless taxpayers' money, our money, while the Auburn citizens have lost their individual rights and property rights. Many Auburn citizens believe that the STR5 voted for ordinance 3288 by enriching friends, business associates and hotel chains while destroying 151 Auburn families. As each month goes by, another family is selling their home. I hope you're proud of your decision. Your due diligence was nonexistent. You mayor have, should have recused yourself like Councilman Dixon. Instead, you convinced one of our council members that was undecided to vote yes for the ordinance. The mayor, the city and the council are out of touch with the Auburn citizens. Let me clarify the definition of bureaucrats. It is only the overpaid upper 7% of the city employees who enjoy restricting our freedoms through regulations and ordinance, not taking, not talking about the wonderful employees who came to my house to fix a sewer issue, or the efficient Auburn Fire Department immediate response when my wife's blood pressure rapidly rose over 200. Response are the kind of off-duty officer who on a Sunday downtown while was with his family jumped off my SUV with his truck. I appreciate all those people. None of you can give me one good reason, fact-driven data, for this discrimination ordinance that is involved on half of the Auburn population. As the Councilman Griswold told me over and over that this ordinance 3288 was for the better of the whole. Sir, do you and your council members ever ask your voters for their opinion, not just their votes, but maybe say, I'm your councilperson and I would like you to, your inputs and thoughts about your ward and our ward in the city? Your constituents believe their opinion is not important. Why do you think that only a fraction of the voting population voted for you in 2021? Because they feel like you do not listen to them. Last year, we canvassed over 823 Auburn citizens, 816 signed a petition that ordinance 3288 should be rescinded. We sent the petition to the council members of no avail. John Paul Jones said, during the American Revolution War, "I have yet begun to fight." Thank you.
Who'll be next?
Mayor Anders, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Herbert Walter DeMar Jr., 412 Willacar Road, apartment 111. I'm here tonight to briefly address the issue of homelessness. I'm one of the Tumer's sit-in people, some of you know. And today was the 1255th day. We've noticed a number of homeless people around Tumer's corner. And with the City of Auburn growing, I'm concerned it's going to be a growing problem. And I've gotten to know two people particularly, one lady who I did help on a couple of occasions. Last Saturday night, while I was downtown trying to put some food in for the Beat Bama Food Drive, this same lady was yelling from a bench along East Magnolia Avenue, hey! And I was looking around, and then she said, come here, come here, two times. And I had to tell her I was busy, I was walking away, I had to walk away. And I'm just concerned about the issue of the pain handling, not that I'm against homeless people or anything like that or being, you know, I realize that, you know, some people are just aggressive and this is the way it is. But I would urge you all to review the ordinances related to homelessness and just inform the citizens of that, because as I said, the homeless issue is going to be bigger as Auburn becomes bigger. I would like to thank the city for its support of Habitat for Humanity. I know I had a chance to sit in on the opening of two houses lately. I'm sure everybody's proud of that. And also, thank Mr. Davis for his work towards, you know, addressing the issue of affordable housing. I've had a chance to hear him several times on that.